Good evening and welcome everyone to the July 12, 2023 meeting of the Yarmouth Planning Board. I'm Joanne Crowley, Chair. This is a joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals. Chairman Stephen DeYoung is here as well with members of his of his board as well. This is to formally advise that is required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20, Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on July 12 at 6:00 p.m. Public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided through our town website. I will begin by taking roll call for the planning board. Susan Britta, Willie Rubenstein, Jim Saban.
President.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Yeah.
Chris Vincent, Joanne Crowley. Here, seeing we have a quorum present for the planning board, I will call the meeting to order. Mr. DeYoung, did you want to do, you need to do? Can we identify who's here from zoning?
Sure, very much. Steve DeYoung for the zoning board chair. With me, Dick Martin, on the board, and I'm John. Short term, I'm board member, and Jay Gregory.
Okay, so seeing we have a quorum of both boards, we can now call the meeting to order. And we appreciate. Evening. I don't see a flag, so we're not going to do. But we have, on our agenda this evening, we have a couple of topics that staff have jointly put together with regard to accessory apartments, temporal season, temporary seasonal housing, for seasonal, temporary seasonal employee housing, I'll get it right, solar canopies, signs, and any other issues that members of either of the boards would like to speak on. We will not, we've public, members of the public are welcome to listen. We will not be taking any comments from the public this evening. We'd like to work, have this as a working session and focus on some things that could, two boards need to work on collectively. So with that, I'd just like to start with a question for you, Steve. If, how, we can proceed in a couple of different ways with regard to the accessory apartment amendment. Would you like Kathy to run through kind of a summary of it for you? Would that be helpful?
I think we all pretty well are aware of.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Seeking for spam.
Yeah, so what, Kathy, you want to just run through maybe some of your?
Let me just share.
Sure.
Okay. So just very briefly, I think you all know that we have an accessory apartment bylaw. Now you guys administer administer it through a special permit. It's very limited, it's limited to family-related and capital A affordable, which really have certain restrictions with regard to rental rates and who you can rent to and income eligibility and that type of thing. Last fall, we got a citizen's petition to really change the accessory apartment bylaw, often referred to as accessory dwelling units or ADUs. So they looked like, we had about 200 signatures. So there's kind of a real movement of saying, maybe we need to start looking at some changes to the accessory apartment bylaw. So the planning board kind of has been working since last November in order to come up with some amendments. They've had various public input sessions. We had an initial listening session last December to kind of get some input on some different provisions. And they kind of worked really hard for several months and came up with this draft 12 that you have in front of you, which we have been going out on the road with three listening sessions with the public and have heard heard back from them. So the real purpose in it, I'll just go briefly through the different provisions, but the real purpose and intent is obviously we're looking to increase options for rental units in town, year-round rental units, because we're really looking to keep, you know, our workforce going, allow people to, who have grown up on the Cape, to still be able to live here. We want people to be able to age in place. We also want to be sure that family members can still have that close family relationship, still have their little separate areas. All doing this while making sure that we're not doing anything that will adversely impact the character and appearance of our single-family residential neighborhoods as well as our environment. So we talked a little bit about what properties would be eligible. So basically, all single fam, all properties with single-family homes are eligible. The ones that are not eligible are deed-restricted affordable housing units. They're required to not, in their deed, to rent out any portion of their home. Right now, we have all lots developed under a comprehensive permit or Chapter 40B, which you guys see not all that often, but, but sometimes. But they already have certain concessions already in a chapter 40B, where they might have higher density, smaller lots already. And then lots with more than one single-family dwelling on it. So if you have a duplex already, or you have multifamily already, you would not be eligible to have an accessory apartment. So some of the general standards that we're looking at, just want to be sure that the accessory apartment is a complete and separate housekeeping unit, kind of functions independently of the primary single-family home and man, and includes sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. We have included some specific information here on the kitchen that some comments came out of the listening session that we may not be, need to be that specific because the sanitary code might be covering some of that information already. We're limiting only one accessory apartment per lot, which is the current bylaw right now. We've, we also took a really good look at the minimum lot sizes. Right now, the minimum lot size for accessory apartments is 10,000 square feet. So we have heard from people with concerns about, we do have a lot of very small lots, non-conforming small lots in the town of Yarmouth. So basically, the planning board decided that the minimum lot size would remain at 10,000 square feet for studios or one bedrooms, but that it would be bumped up to 15,000 square feet if you had a two-bedroom accessory apartment. You can't have more than two bedrooms right now, that's being restricted. And then we just wanted to make sure that the accessory apartment, you need, when you're constructing an accessory apartment, you need to meet all the current dimensional standards. So building coverage, setbacks, building height, and all of these, all of the current zoning bylaw. So really kind of not necessarily being grandfathered based on a lot of the non-conforming structures that you guys see. The accessory apartment, you can locate it within your current structure. You can convert something within your current home. You can build something new and attach it to, to your home, or you can have it on a separate detached structure. But all of them need to be subordinate to your principal structure. We're looking to have the apartments designed to the maximum extent practical, that they appear like buildings in a single-family residential home and that they're consistent with the design of the principal single-family home on the property with regard to the roof lines and building orientations and the building materials. Here again, as I had mentioned, it's limits to no, no more than two bedrooms and no variances shall be permitted for this requirement. And this is really setting the size of the units. Right now, the size of the units has nothing to do with the size of the current structure on the property. It's simply a maximum of 800 square feet. This modification would be for studios and one-bedroom accessory apartments. You, you would be allowed up to 50% of the maximum habitable floor area, and we'll define that in a little bit, or 800 square feet, whichever smaller. So we considered habitable floor area to basically be garages, unfinished attics, basements, common entries, porches, and decks are excluded from the habitable floor area calculations. So we define that. Two bedrooms accessory would again be the 50% of the habitable, but we get up a little bit larger and allow up to 900 square feet, whichever smaller. But regardless of the habitable floor area, we want to make sure that we're creating functional units. So there's a minimum of 350 square foot size for the units. Currently, right now, we're requiring at least two off-street parking spaces on the premises for the principal dwelling and two additional for the off-street parking. The planning board did meet on July 5, and we're actually talking about maybe changing that to one space per bedroom. So that's something that we'd like to hear some input from, from the ZBA on as well. And also, we got somewhat specific here with regard to what you can and where you can, and we cannot have the parking for the accessory with regard to not allowing it in the front of the principal dwelling or expanding it in front of the principal dwelling and then making sure it's 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. So some input from you guys on how practical those types of restrictions are and how that might have some impacts based on the, all the other accessory apartments you guys have seen would be, would be very helpful. All stormwater and new impervious parking areas need to be retained on the site. So we want to make sure that no one's having stormwater runoff that's going off onto their adjacent property. We also want to make sure that we're not getting things where someone's condominiumizing their property. So then accessory apartments are not intended for sale and shall not be a separate ownership from the primary home. We don't, we're not trying to create duplexes here. With just some information on some site plan information that's going to be required as well as architectural plans, so we get a good idea of what the accessory apartment would look like. And right now, we have restricted the eligibility for an accessory apartment to people who are residents of the town of Yarmouth. The idea was that we wanted people to be here, present, monitoring their property, maintaining their property, and, and being, being there with regard to having a rental unit. Jim's crossing out stuff. One of the things that we had talked about and had been brought up at the listening sessions was whether we should allow second homeowners to be eligible for having an accessory apartment. The idea is lots of times, there's many neighborhoods now, they kind of go dark in the winter. People might be going down for several months down to Florida. This might be a good way of having someone rent out an accessory apartment and keep an eye on the property and keep an eye on your neighborhood during that time. You would only be able to rent out one at a time, so that, that restriction would remain. And we would also need to work up a definition of owners, so we're not including LC, LLCs and corporations. So that was something we'd work with town council, come up with a definition. So we were looking at maybe expanding it from just residents only to residents and second homeowners. So that's something that we're looking for some input on as well to make sure that we're solving the problem that we have with year-round housing. All lease agreements need to be for a minimum of 12 consecutive months with no short-term rentals and no subleasing or room rentals. No commercial uses shall be allowed except for the definition of meeting home offices and home occupations per Section 416. These are relatively innocuous things. There's just kind of like someone has a desk in the corner and they're doing work on their computer. There's nobody coming to your home. You have no employees coming to your home. So it's very, it's very, very limited. And then the last is, of course, all accessory apartments need to be all other state. I mean, zoning is just one component of accessory apartments. There's all the building code requirements, plumbing, electrical, fire, health, sanitary code, and then other historic regulations. Like if you're living above Route 6A, or excuse me, Route 6, you have Old Kings Highway that you have to deal with, with a certificate of appropriateness. You will need a certificate of occupancy from the building department for all accessory apartments. Currently, right now, there was, was a lot of discussion back and forth about allowing accessory apartments by right. The citizen petition last fall was 100% by right. The accessory apartment bylaw we have now is 100% special permit. So we were trying to maybe think of some areas that we could carve out that the board would feel comfortable allowing by right. So basically, this section for permitting says that all accessory apartments shall require a special permit except for, and it talks about these three carve-outs. One of them is, is if you have a fully conforming lot and structure. So when everything's said and done, you have a, a lot that meets the minimum lot size according to your residential zoning district and your existing structure and your proposed accessory apartment all meet the required setbacks. So you're, we would be fully compliant with the current zoning bylaw. The second option here, option B, is if the accessory apartment would be located completely within your existing structure, except for obviously, we're going to need some means of egress to get people safely in and out of, of the home. But you would also need to meet all of the dimensional requirements for the accessory apartment, and it would be limited to a studio or a one-bedroom. So this one's probably the most liberal carve-out because this could happen on a 10,000 square foot lot if you could construct it within your structure. An expansion or new construction. So we wanted to give some carve-out for expanding your existing structure in order to have an accessory apartment or having a new detached structure for an accessory apartment. Again, you'd need to be fully compliant with all of the dimensional standards. And then you would have to be limited to the studio or one-bedroom. And you, and this particular one, you'd have to have a minimum of 25,000 square foot in order to be eligible. We heard a lot about this in the listening sessions. And the planning board, when they met on July 5, was really kind of really heard what was being said and also concerned about the fact that they really want to be sure that we're presenting an amendment that has the best chance of passing at Fall Town Meeting. So there was only four members present, but the four members present were really leaning more towards allowing everything, or requiring everything to have a special permit. So that's another thing we were kind of looking for, some input from you guys and whether, how you feel about either the carve-outs or, or the special permit. I know Jim's not happy. So just, and then it just kind of goes through different types of records and inspections. It requires an affidavit annually to go to the building department, kind of identifying, you know, are you, one of the options that is allowed is if you have a smaller household and you want to stay in the accessory apartment, you can kind of, in a sense, switch them and rent the other one. So just letting us know what you're doing there. If you're renting it out, the unit, we want to, you know, have some documentation that it's a 12-month lease and that you're not doing some short-term rental because that's not what we're trying to do with this. And then also, you know, if you're not renting it out at all because it's a family member, just let us know. And the main reason for all of that is how it gets inspected and who it gets inspected by varies. So if you're renting it out just right now, if you're renting out any unit right now in the town of Yarmouth, you need to have, get it, have it registered and inspected by the health department annually for the accessory apartments, the family-related ones. The building department inspects them every two years. So it kind of just gives a, keeps kind of tabs on, on what's happening with the family-related. If somebody wants to convert it to a rental unit, that's fine too. They just need to kind of let us know what's going on. So the building department and the health department keep a running tab of all of the accessory apartments and the inspections. And then, you know, as with anything, if you fail to meet all of the requirements, you could be subject to penalties as outlined in, in zoning bylaw. We have a lot of existing family-related right now. So we wanted to talk about what happens to all of the existing things we already have on the books. And basically, you know, you can keep chugging along under your special permit and, and keep it as is if you want. You could also, you could also convert it to an, what we've been referring to as an unrestricted accessory apartment. So you could say, oh, you know what? I no longer need this for a family member. I've already spent all the money. I have a nice unit. Maybe I want to rent it out to my friend at work, and then you can convert it to a, a unrestricted rental. Same thing kind of applies to the existing affordable. There's only three of the existing affordable. None of them have a deed restriction, but their special permits do limit them to affordable. And again, it allows them a way of continuing on with what they're doing or being able to convert it. It's a little more complicated because they might have more things recorded at the registry of deeds. The, the last thing here, we're talking about what happens to the accessory apartment when you sell. And basically, what we're indicating is accessory apartments created after the effective date of this bylaw. It basically transfers upon sale. Again, you're just having the affidavit to the building commissioner to kind of let us know what's going on there. It says within 45 days of sale. We've heard a lot of comments that that might be too fast, so we're going to take a look at, at that timeframe. And the family-related accessory apartments transfer on sale is basically what's in the bylaw right now. Basically allowing 45 days to kind of change that covenant for family-related and identify the new family member. And again, with the affordable, just kind of providing, providing the documentation within 45 days that you're going to continue with meeting the requirements of your special permit and the affordability requirements. If somebody were interested, they could also convert their affordable or accessory to an unrestricted one before they sell it. And then none of this would, would be, it would be less complicated at that time. And, and that's, and that's about it.
Yeah. So what, when we had our listening sessions, this is included in part of our agenda here, there were three items that kept coming at all of our meetings. And, and they are, obviously, the discussion with regard to special permit or by right, what the definition of the, of, of the owner is, and, and parking. And so what we, what we wanted to do was get, since you, you see these, you see these applications and, and a sense for what some of the issues are. We, we just wanted to engage and get your sense about where we, where, where the amendment might be best, the best direction for it.
Well, let me start off by saying, kind of, this board, another members, presumptuous enough to make them tell. We have our thoughts and our decisions, but we have two different boards that will deal with it. So I'm glad it's going to speak first because I always speak first. I, do you want me to go to problems?
Sure, yeah, sure, absolutely. Jump right in.
With respect to the, the suggestion that they should be reduced parking, I urge this board to consider two plus two irrespective of one bedroom or two bedroom. Two plus two is almost a given in today's world. If you have a family residing in the apartment of a standard dwelling, it's likely to be too bright because everybody now has two. Particularly in this town. Secondly, I think that, wait, it's not a big jump from one to two bedrooms, I'll tell you. And I don't want to live in that other bedroom, that 10 by 10, but, you know, maybe that's what we have to do. I'm not sure I really know why we have to do this. I, I thought it was affordable, an accessory, family-related accessory. I'm sure I know why market rate that would be that way. And I think it's a must-do, but thank goodness somebody's paying the issue. They confronted with housing issues, a lack of available housing issues, whether affordable or great consequences. You know, we're all going to look at one coming up down the pipe to just 40B. And that's, you know, we'll talk about that one against the board or that one. I've seen that's going to. I have a lot of units. I, I'm sorry that I stepped out during. Was there a discussion about the owner occupied, that the owner must occupy?
We had talked about, the way it's written right now is that it's, it is owner-occupied. So you need to be a resident, but one of the things that came out of the listening sessions is maybe opening that up to second homeowners or non-residents to come up with the definition.
Well, as we've looked around this town, when perhaps, I, I don't want to single out any particular property, but I can think of one right here in 2028. It became a disaster that it was not home. It, it's just a high sore problem. So they're, they're not going to be in occupancy. I think that it really lends itself to tenants go wild. And then I'm going to worry about whether or not paint is on the front door. Somebody is, like, a friend over, right? But lawn is dry one. I want to think about that, but that's just purely from my thoughts, I've seen it about the town. Struck by some of these properties that have gone wild because of lack of fullness.
I think the other thing that we talked about when you were gone had to do with the carve-outs. Everything is being by special permit, and then there was three particular carve-outs for allowing them by right. And then planning board was thinking of maybe making them all via special permit because we really heard a lot about that in the listening sessions. And we wanted to know how you guys felt about that.
You know, when you came up with the village centers, domain of the yield board, planning board, I think is structural problem in the way you're conceiving it. Because not only are you deciding what's lived by and presented to the town, you're also the enforcement agent. I think that's a dangerous thing to put that kind of power one would. And you know, also, I, it's, it's wants to give up the term, right? But this was a big discussion back when those building centers were discussed or, or. HMOs, and we were asked to give up certain rights then, not rights for enforcement, but you know, when you're planning and you're enforcing, I, I just think it's a dangerous.
I, I might have not been clear. It would be the zoning board of appeals special.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
No.
Planning board would be.
No, 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 no. The planning board discussed making them all by special permit through the zoning board of appeals.
Oh.
And I didn't know how you felt about that, maybe potentially extra work.
Add two things that, you know, you touched on, the three things that are, the two that came to mind. Parking is a person. Parking is always a concern. If that's a situation that's come up or parking is questioned for some existing homes in different spots. So I really agree with Steve that two plus two makes a lot of sense. These people probably even have guests, they're going to come by. It's not like, even if they don't have two themselves, they're going to have guests. And so I, I completely. The second thing I have by right, by special. Just curious about Mark's input. He's going to get him if they're, if they're by right. So I was a little curious on how he felt about the carve-outs. I think carve-outs are okay. I, I understand them. If they meet all the guidelines as far as the setbacks, the height, the, all that kind of thing, you know, then it makes, makes sense to me. If there's any restrictions, I think it should be closely reviewed. So there were one and two, I think I agree with on the car. You don't want to get involved with this, just, we're going to, we're booked out now far now. They're trying to find ways to shrink our time so people can get things done. So if Mark can approve something, I think it's great. So those are mine, you.
Great, great, thank you.
Just finally, there's some good input for us.
Well, that's good input. I have some reservations about the whole thing, which you kind of made known before. You know, we, we did a lot of zoning over the years in this town to, to increase lot size, therefore having fewer people adding to the sole-source aquifer and groundwater and issues, which of course is so serious these days. And I see by allowing additional units and more people. I mean, I know the idea is, well, hopefully, maybe a little old lady will live one, take part of the house using accordingly and the rest of it. But this, there's a lot of ifs, ands, buts. I think it definitely has to go to board of appeals. I don't think that any of this should be as of right because there are so many ifs, ands, buts. I have problems with how, who's going to be able to please how these things look. I mean, is every single-family house on a quarter acre lot if somebody wanted to? Again, in certain areas of town, I know the aquifer is going to be different and so forth. But are, you know, are we suddenly going to have what amounts to a duplex on quarter acre lots? I mean, that's what we all tried to get away from for years and years and years. And just because of the housing issue, yes, there is a housing issue. Yes, probably something needs to be done, and I think this is a good, very good attempt. I know there were some parties, including the board of realtors, who, who came up with ideas that were going to make it even much easier, which I do not, do not agree with. But I, I have a, a real problem with that. How is it going to look? It's going to affect the quality of a, a single-family neighborhood by making a single-family neighborhood suddenly a, potentially, and not everyone's going to do it, of course, but, you know, potentially, you know, that house over there, that also there, suddenly preparing the essence to break. And, and yes, that allows people to rent and make more money, and that's all, all nice thing, but we're not a city. I mean, if we had the sewers in place, I mean, I'd feel a little better about a lot of this, but they're not in place yet. And I'm still, and I hear from a lot of people out there, they're not really interested in, in a single-family neighborhood, it's becoming a rental neighborhood. And not to say that my, all owners are going to do it, but a lot of owners will be enticed into doing this just to make more money. And, and does it really help the issue of, of housing? Yeah, I guess it will, but, you know, I'm looking at so many of these 40Bs that are developing on, on 28 and you know, in one sense, yes, we need the housing, but I keep hearing that, you know, the housing isn't even going to local people. They're bringing people in from Brockton and Val River and, and Boston and whatever in order to, to meet the cri, certain criteria and fill these places up. So I mean, are we even accomplishing what we want to accomplish? If that's, if that's the idea. Um, so I mean, are we even accomplishing what we want to accomplish if that's if that's the idea behind all this? One more lenient thing, if we do go this way, I think. A second homeowner, you know, being able to do this is probably not illogical. Like make some sense to have somebody year round, even if they're not year round, I don't have a real problem with that particular. Idea, but the whole density issue and community character and looks of it all and parking. You know, we're going to end up with these houses where people are packing, they're not supposed to, but we're going to need three cars parked along the, you know, front lawn. Um, and we've seen it before, and I mean, all you have to do is go into a duplex neighborhood in this town right now, we don't want so good. Um, and and are we asking for more of that? I think we're. You know, I I know Howard is doing some sound, but they require a forty thousand square foot lot to to have any. Uh, any house, not a ten thousand square foot, yes, I know, we've got a lot of ten thousand square foot lots. That doesn't mean we have to fill them and with another uh, another housing unit and make them in essence five thousand. I have more to say, but that's.
Well, I my mind, it covered a lot of ground there. Just a couple of things out there and special permit.
So you want owner occupied owner.
And also like to see how Mark feels about all this, it's going to put a lot of pressure. They'll put some pressure on us in the board of appeals certainly, but it'll put even more pressure. On him with the building department and and the health department relevant to um, issues that they have to deal with.
Kathy.
You want to say anything?
I just ask if if people, I can only see like three or four of you, so if people could say who they are, so I know who's talking, so somebody just spoke before. Um, Dick, and I didn't know who that was, so.
I think it was John that was speaking.
Okay. Thank you.
Of what trouble will you have, Mr.?
Bite down. Mark, did you want to say anything?
I have a question about the owner occupancy, does that mean that they can be like. For winter in Florida and like not rent out the other unit, because that was getting came up a lot in the in the public.
I'd like to see the order.
What if they go to Florida for the winter? I just want to be clear moving forward.
Well, I don't think you're unoccupied if you do have. So you're not going to have a residency.
Right, it got to residents.
You gotta get sure you say I'm careful, yeah, you know, half of the year and uh and plus a day. And and I'm down, yes, the other half, the problem is exactly why I believe it's really relevant, I think. Other members would agree is that. Is that, uh, you you know, when you're not in attendance, it's going to go to hell. And uh, I, you know, not speaking, not speaking about the square footage of them and Dick has brought it up, I I think that. The size of a lot is kind of critical, we drive right down uh. Twenty eighth year and come to a lot of. We have five thousand square foot lots down. And and actually, you know, but we're expanding it even further, it's not necessarily an expansion of. Hey, right, there's no right to this. So to put restrictions on it, I don't think we've got a new challenge.
I mean, we're already the densest populated town on the case. And we are already have probably more, even though it's not enough by state guidelines, we have more. Affordable housing and housing uh of a certain price range than again any other community on the case. So I don't know why why we always have to be that. Turn dumping ground, but in one sense.
I think there's another reality, that's that affordable housing isn't, I I don't know what that. Get rent, so. You know, if you're going to get a good rent. Uh, this is.
It is marketed, yeah, it should all be marketed.
Oh, that's good. My point is made a different way. Uh, right now, anybody could seem to. With zoning board. Special paper and. Stop a an accessory apartment. One of two ways, either as a for a family member or for affordable. Affordability, but addition. So if what we're trying to do is make more housing and to keep it within certain controls, I don't know how this adds to. This problem of, you know, local housing crunches and when anybody could do it right now. Just come before us and get enough square footage, we're going to give you the permit.
The the difference is though is that we're defining the tenant. We're we're defining the tenant. Now, now. And it's a rather strict.
I mean, what does it matter if it depending all being the same market rent? How does it doesn't matter? Maybe because someone is getting some assistance on living.
Well, what we what what our thinking was as we were going through this and and in in various meetings with the public. Um, defining the tenants didn't didn't appear to us to be. Um, an an important requirement for a zoning regulation, we don't, we we don't care who lives there as the tenant. Uh, right now, we define what family is, it's blood, and we know the definition of family has changed. Since our first bylaw was written on uh on accessory apartments and to affordable and the restrictions on affordable. Meaning the the tenant, we have only three affordable apartments in town, it just hasn't worked. It just, it's not, it's not helping that layer of of a tenancy, if you will. Um, and so our thinking was, and again, listening to um various sides. Why do we care who the tenant is and why do we care what rent they're going to charge?
So when we if if you go back historically, you talked about family related. It was so that there would not be the creed that Dick spoke of earlier. And that was a, it was, and I believe is a justifiable reason for that, but just. Secondly, when you're talking about uh affordability, we were trying to get on others up quite frankly. And and you could see a pathway to an accessory apartment, a family related apartment. Uh, now evolving into affordable. And that to get to our ten percent, you know, we're trying to all get there. We're never going to reach it, we recognize that that's going to be a difficult task, but that was the history. Get time eating, but personally, I see. That the word affordable is anything other than is, yeah, as it's implemented today, that's a market brand. So what do they have?
Why would anybody in the future do affordable family if they have an accessory? Because of more flexibility.
They wouldn't. In moving into the future, you would probably, it doesn't really matter. Um, you you create the unit and you could rent it out at market rate rents, or a family member could stay in it, and then if they don't need it anymore, then you can rent it out. The the capital A of affordable, the problem is is the construction costs now are so high and it costs so much to create an accessory apartment. So renting it out at the very low restricted capital A affordable rents makes it more difficult. For people to like, okay, I want to invest that kind of money in in it and and make it happen, and I think that's kind of why we have the three. And we have like about fifty two family related.
So does that mean that each new apartment created that 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 because they're going to get more rent for the unit that they will. Will still be going back with some affordability? They think that's what you're going to see? Who would bother to put an affordable?
No, nobody would, the 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 affordable part would go away in a sense, you could create one and you could either rent it out or you can have a family live in it. And when the family doesn't need to use it anymore, you could rent it out if you wanted, or you could eliminate the kitchen and and get rid of it altogether. Right, right.
Right, that's what I was wondering, it's like, why would be? This didn't make any sense that they would do anything like that.
That's right.
We have.
Are you going to keep the the bylaws for family and affordable even in the bylaws that you put this in place?
No, you'll see that there's a thing, what do what do we kind of do with the things that we have on the books now? You could convert those through a special permit with the zoning board of appeals to an unrestricted one if you wanted to. Or you could, in a sense, continue running it under your current special permit and all those things that you have right now. And and Jay, this this replaces section four and seven, this is a complete replacement. Yeah, thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to make a point of, you know, I know this happens now, is you you can rent out a room now. So I mean, people can rent anyway, so, you know, it's, you can rent up to free room, yes. I mean, I know people order, I know people do it, and it's so is this going to be different also different as far as density goes? Rent out a room. That's why people are going to try to make it, you know, I just think it's, you know, it's, I'm looking in the store away to. Do people who. Want to make more money from from a property. Does it solve some things? Yeah, I think it does, but unfortunately, I think it also causes new problems.
I agree with you on that's the issues.
Anyone else from a planning board side? Mr. Saban, your hand is up, I see it.
Hi there, uh, I wasn't sure if this was a listening or contributing. I guess, uh, I think it's important that we understand that. We have a problem in this community. And it's not just Yarmouth, it's all of Cape Cod, and we can't just pretend that, oh, Yarmouth has to be special, because we're not. We caused this problem by doing the things that we've done, by increasing our zoning from twenty thousand to twenty five to forty thousand square feet. If we want to be all exclusive and and keep people out, then absolutely stop doing this stuff. Put zoning out to sixty or seventy thousand square feet until put the not welcome signs in. Um, that's not what we're trying to achieve here, we're trying to achieve, Mr. Martin. Another part of the apple in that is apple pie, and that is providing housing for our community. Yes, there may be some people from New Bedford or something that may move into one of these. But that's the prerogative of the homeowner to pick the person that they want to be able to rent it to. So this is not going to solve our housing issue in any way, shape or form. Um, you know, the existing bylaws are not working as evidenced by only three affordable units. And as Kathy referenced, the cost of housing today, uh, uh, housing construction costs. Prohibits somebody from doing an affordable unit, this is going to allow us to be able to create units. If somebody thinks it's financially feasible to them to make one of these available, some people may do it for just the money as as is suggested. But a lot of people are going to do this for other purposes, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't care what the purpose is. I care that we start finding ways to find solutions to our housing crisis, that we have forty six percent of our workforce. Capewide is coming over the bridge every day, and that's from the other side to us, not from us going the other way. So we need to stop being so parochial, we need to start thinking of ways to solve this problem, and this happens to be one of them. Now, as far as special permit and and uh. By right, um, I have no issue with one and and three. Um, but if the zoning board of appeals would like it all in their lap, then I would say let's make it all by special permit, but eliminate. The uh minimum site sizes of ten and twenty thousand square feet and let them decide, because some people seem to think. That, hey, you know, they're doing such a good job, don't mess with the zoning board of appeals, let them continue to do it. So if that's what we want to do and let the zoning board of appeals decide each and every one of these cases, and I think then we need to eliminate. Some of the other restrictions. That's all.
Thanks, Jim. Um, any other uh uh board members?
Yeah.
Yeah, Peter.
One of the carve outs, um, which is B, existing conforming or non-conforming structures. At one of the listing sessions, I maybe this was always there, but it came to mind, if if a property. Has a garage that was only, it's only there because special permit gave them setbacks or some sort of relief. They are allowed to put an apartment in the garage without going back for modification special. And I think that was.
Problem, I mean, I mean, we've made a lot of decisions before appeals, but you know. Okay, you can have a garage because it's just a garage. Uh, within a within a lot line that we wouldn't have made made that decision if we knew that that was going to be a bedroom or two bedrooms or apartment.
It was true restrict, at least if they come before us, we restrict each and every permit.
Is it? Correct, but Mark's um thought was that if that carve out existed. That person doesn't have to go back to you to now convert that garage into a apartment.
I think what Jay's saying, and I do believe Mark mentioned this, unless the special permit has a condition that restricts it to. Uninhabitable, and that's what you're saying you typically do.
Typically do that, yeah, if it has any any constraints into.
Well, the bylaw, if you leave it the way it's written, it says they need a special permit to create a family related accessory apartment anyway, well, they'd end up before you. But they wouldn't need, um, they wouldn't need structural relief, setback relief, they definitely wouldn't need that, but if the if their. Condition of the special permit that the Z B A granted said that it's only for storage. Then they would definitely, they'd have to ask to relieve from that as well, so it would be asking for two points.
Any 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 anything else? Uh, uh, sorry, Jim, Mr. Saban? You're on mute, Jim, you're mute.
I'm sorry. So by what Mark says, that's that is somewhat concerning, because if you have. I don't know, is it the practice of the Z B A whenever somebody would to ask for a garage to put a restriction on it, that it can't be used for habitable? Because if it's not something that's customary, then there might be some that could actually do as Peter suggests, con- conforming. Uh, converting a garage without. Having to go back to anybody. And I don't think that's what we want to achieve.
That's if it's by right.
Right, with that carve out, that that could actually, what Peter's suggesting could actually happen, somebody could convert. One of those special permit garages to.
Carve out says it has to be conforming, so if it's not conforming, it would have needed relief to begin with.
Right, but if it wasn't conforming and it got the relief to be a garage. And now you want to convert that to one of those three hundred fifty square foot studio apartments.
And there's no restriction on the original special permit, they only got relief from the structure, not from the use.
Right, and that's my question, has the Z B A historically done that or? I'm sorry?
Can we, yes, we have historically, as long as I've been there, we've historically restricted a garage. Uh, uh, above the garage stays, uh, by stating it would shell mark the habit. And we don't, unless they're putting up the uh, one of the two allowing a pattern.
Okay, but.
There's no conversion, there is certainly no right to convert anything for market.
Right, because I think we want to prevent that from happening, um, that 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 apart, that garage gets converted to an apartment without oversight. And and what you're suggesting is that you put a restriction on it when you give them that that relief to begin with. So that's going to require them, if they want to convert it, to come back, and that's what I want to make sure is that that protection happens.
Wouldn't there be an easier solution for planning to suggest a and most accessory apartment, the existing accessory apartment. And the family related apartment provisions, that they are not to be converted to other use. It just can't be converted. Then we don't even have to worry about putting that condition on or not putting it on, making a mistake, not putting it on. We do make mistakes. Not often.
Uh, it 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 is a bit of a loophole. Um, that did come up um a couple of times, and maybe one way to think about it, infrastructure has a special permit associated with it. And you want to convert that to anything. You got to go back and get another special. So if in the, if if I look up on the town website and that address and that structure's got a special permit. You automatically are in the special permit family. You don't, you don't get anything by right.
I think the variance is big. A lot of times it's.
Family really, or if we're going to keep an accessory apartment requiring a special permit, it doesn't matter.
Right, yeah, right. The, the other, um, just one other question I had on the, on the size of the unit, um, Steve, you had mentioned the eight hundred, nine hundred square.
I don't wanna be an average.
No, no, no. We're gonna put, we're gonna put a number in front of you at some point, and the zoning board of appeals will ha- have to work with it. But it is something that has, uh, that was of concern, because, um, and this goes to some of what Dick has said. You know, the word accessory is, is a word I've, I've linked on to quite often. Um, and this, these units are meant to be an accessory. Um, and to me, an accessory, um, I don't wear many of them, but I do have earrings on tonight. Um, but it's meant to be much smaller and subordinate to the main structure in all cases.
No doubt about it, but one came before us very recently. Nice unit, I suggested the floor plan, uh, the very minimum floor plan that one had. Uh, but there was a foyer area that got counted into the living space, and that put it over the eight hundred square feet. And, and I don't think we, you're gonna legislate zoning bylaws, what is counted as livable square feet or not, you know? But it was just that little ten fifteen feet of foyer, do you remember that part? Came before you, and, and my sample son, that went up, so that to me is, eh, eh, when you, it's only adding the second bedroom. I think eight hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet makes sense to me. It's when you add the second bedroom, you've got a ten by ten bedroom, which is just gonna fit a bed, and you don't even have a closet.
With that, the rest of it is off.
But I, I will share with you the, the comments that we heard a lot were about size. Um, and so, as you consider, you know, when you do grant a variance or a special permit, and you have granted some variances on accessory apartments that were fairly, at least one that I'm aware of, was fairly large. It was like thirteen hundred square feet or something.
Was that done recently?
A couple of years ago, um, and it might have been because of a handicap issue, handicap access issue.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Yeah, but. I just looked at, there was one, I think it's on, on, um, over in the Blue Rock area. In way, I, I, it doesn't matter. Yeah, well, my, uh, uh, again, what we heard loud and clear was about sensitivity about size. Um, and, and I know you've. Yeah, yeah, being too big.
The fifty percent is, yeah, that limits.
Yeah, it's like a variance was granted in this particular case for a fairly large, so, um, just some feedback for you guys that that kind of limit is, is, the public seem to be very sensitive to that.
And, uh, question is, is it gonna be the board of appeals to decide, you know, how it comes from, yeah? Different, for instance, to how it looks. I mean, somebody take a little two-bedroom ranch as a, as a garage and convert the garage into this living unit and there's two doors, and it suddenly becomes like, just like a duplex. Is, do, is the board of appeals that has control over that and saying, no, if we don't like the looks of it? Or, or, or not? Also, border health issues, yeah, if we have a two-bedroom house and a garage, somebody wants to make an apartment in the garage, comes, let's say, at least it's three-bedroom, not a four-bedroom, um, if you have a two-bedroom septic system, they're gonna have to upgrade the septic system.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And, uh, it gets in, everybody gets dragged into this somehow, so, but what, I, I mean, who, does a chicken come before the egg or what?
I think with appearance, I do think it, it helps, because, I mean, if things are by right, then you're kind of, puts Mark in a very difficult position, because we're saying in the bylaw needs to maintain the appearance of a single-family residential neighborhood and, or dwelling. Um, you guys have more experience kind of looking at things and, and making suggestions. I think most people are, seem relatively open to some suggestions that you have or conditions that you have added on to, on to the accessory apartments that you've done already, cuz I know that Dee did a very nice detailed analysis, and you guys proved most of them, if not all of them. Uh, very few of them were denied, or that most likely they get withdrawn without pre- without prejudice. Um, so I think you guys do a good job on that, and that's why maybe being by special permit might be beneficial.
You're like a side entrance, yeah, like. Yeah, and I think that's what you guys are looking for too, and everybody's looking at that, but is it spelled out to a point where somebody can say, no, because this doesn't look the way, you know, we'd like to look here, can we say no to this person who wants it to make the book, just like the regular old duplex?
And as a rental, you need to keep in mind that we don't have any role. Just merely a form of ownership. So, all we do is just ensure that there is a governing body.
Right.
So, when you have now a garage or separate structure, that, and we just deal with one of these down on, well, self. Problematic, uh, oh, that's my view with. We don't have a view restriction, so I don't explain to you. But the idea of putting a garage by existing, uh, yeah, uh, existing household, single family as well, and then converting the garage. The next thing that will happen is it will become a converted.
Specifically not allowed. Kind, chain, putting it into a condominium form of ownership is not allowed, specifically excluded.
Okay.
So, if they come to you guys with that, say, no. Shouldn't even get to you, yeah, right.
Thank you. Yeah, I can't see him.
Four oh seven point three, number six, we're talking about the staircase and that foyer, um, pushing the that one apartment over eight hundred square feet, the last sentence in there references garages, unfinished attic, basements, common entry porches, and decks were included, from the half of the floor area calculations. Maybe add more to that if you're already, you know, closet something like that.
Yeah.
Somebody even mentioned there was an issue with the, the modest square footage and throwing closets in there and making what things. We don't, we don't need that with closets. We consider the bedroom to just. That's what a bedroom is.
Well, it's, they can close a door to a walk-in closet. So, we're excluding those as part of the living space. Doesn't that have the potentiality to become another bedroom?
No, under seventy square feet wouldn't be legal. You could live in a shed too, but it's legal.
I think.
How are you gonna find out? And we do our annual inspections or our bi- inspections.
The neighbor calls.
They have to get a rental, so that those people are in the go.
There's awful lot of illegal renting going on.
Oh, you should come see my list of the legally. They just, they, they throw over.
Hey, uh, should we move on to the next?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Can, can I just quickly comment on, on the, the subject of, I've really been silent on this whole issue, but the, the issue of character of our community? You know, I get it if you're talking about the character of Captain's Village or Parthia Estates, but you drive down Berry Avenue, explain to me the character of Berry Avenue, where you got a flat roof house that looks like it belongs in Florida, next to a house that looks like it came from Cape Cod, next to a house that looked like it came from somewhere else. So, I'm having a hard time with the character of our community. You know, north of six A, we have, you know, the opinion of appropriateness. I call it the hysterical society, because sometimes it's pretty funny what they say and do. And if we're gonna start putting the character of our community in the hands of the ZBA or the planning board or anybody else, now we're talking about the taste police. So, you know, some people might like that flat roof house with the, the fake palm tree on Berry Avenue, and others may want. What, sorry?
I said it's very much like Florida, that house. But yeah, this character, just a, but in and out, any kind of deal with that, sure, this, you know, when you're near the beach and there are a lot of two-family houses and cottages and next to a big house, and it is very mixed. And, and that in essence is the character of that neighborhood. But just as you yourself point out, when you get into Parthia Estates and Captain's Village and any other single-family residential neighborhood, those areas have a character, and I think you're opening the door to changing the character of those nice, single-family residential neighborhoods to, to rental, uh, you know, rental city.
Let's not forget that for chapter forty-eight speaks to our need to assure that it does not and come a detriment to the existing or future character of the neighborhood now. We're not gonna re, re, uh, imagine chapter forty-eight.
It, it, no, and I, I don't suggest we do, but I, my point being that if we're starting to decide what's an appropriate look of a vehicle, of a building, now, where do we draw that line? I mean, I grew up in Hyannis Park, and I will tell you that right now, if you drive through Hyannis Park and come back through the back road from the hospital, that neighborhood looks absolutely nothing like it was when I grew up there. All those houses that were cottages and Cape Cod, sand dunes and salty air that Patty Page sang about are no longer there. It's the same thing if you drive along the Bass River, those houses are no longer there. So, where do we figure out, and, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to be a pain on this, but is that gonna be an issue that we've got to deal with? I try to address stuff in advance, so that when we do get a bylaw that nobody's struggling with. So, character of the community is kind of like, uh, what was that saying? I don't know what pornography is until I see it. Well, maybe character of our community is something we don't know until we see it. And I, I don't want this to be. Well, that's my point. Do we have character in this community? I mean, we've been told two twenty-eights honky tonk. Yeah. It ain't anymore.
We don't tell, we don't tell people how to design as structures.
That's my point, Steve.
That's what we're talking about.
That's my point. If we gotta preserve the character of our community, who makes that decision as to whether, I come to you with the, from the, as a, as an applicant, and I wanna put a accessory unit on my property, but I want it to look like the Eiffel Tower. I'm being very ridiculous here, but now you're gonna tell me I can't do it cuz you don't like the character of my community?
Yeah.
Now you're the, now you're the design police. I would agree with you, but yeah, we wouldn't want that, but now we're the design police, which is what the historic society does north of six A, uh, Route six. Are we gonna put those same architectural controls south of six?
They don't exist, and we're not trying to make them this. We're not legislating what they have to, you know, I have to do that.
We're only talking.
I mean, you're never, you're never gonna, you're never gonna deny a permit. You're not gonna deny a permit because of its character. And cuz it doesn't fit into a community.
You, you can't, you can't ask that kind of question, Jim. How do we know what will happen in the future?
Well, that's my point.
So, sure. So, maybe, maybe for the future, well, on the currently constituted zoning board, it is highly unlikely that we will ever deny a permit based upon the character of the home. If somebody wants to build a square home with a flat roof, I don't, we're not gonna tell them. I never even thought of telling somebody they can do something like that.
And, and Steve, I would agree with you. This picture is seen board. That, and I, and I'm with you with that. This board has not done that, but we don't know in ten years from now who's gonna be sitting on that board. And we make these decisions and these discussions. It's not about who's sitting today. It's about what's gonna happen in the future, because of us here in the future. So, I don't want character of the community to be an issue that's gonna come back and say, in a future board, sorry, we don't want you to build an Eiffel Tower on.
It's a mass general law statute to worry concern. We can't amend Massachusetts for the chapter forty, uh, MGL forty-eight.
So, then why are we talking about character in this bylaw?
But if I, if I may, Mr. Saban, um, the only, and, 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 Mr. Young, the only provision in this amendment talks about how the accessory department, apartment will look. And it needs to look like the primary residence in architecture, in roof design, in building spacing, orientation, door and window placement. We do give, we give a framework that we hope would be helpful to the zoning board of appeals to say, yeah, that extra thing that they're gonna add, that accessory, looks a lot like what they, the primary residence is. And that's the only time we get into being the fashion police. As far as I can see, in, as I read the menu. It's the only time where, where the fashion police is, hey, you got a beautiful gambrel, you know, don't put up, um, you know, a bauhaus next to it. I don't know. Um, so, I, uh, we've had these, we've had these discussions before on, 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 on neighborhood characteristics. Uh, but I, I think I'd like to, it's okay with everybody. Move on to the next thing, the seasonal, um, workforce, workforce housing is, um, has been on your agenda, um, Mr. Young, several times. We've, uh, put, put forward a couple of notes to the board, um, supporting a couple of the, um, approvals that, uh, have gone forward on two of the hotels. Um, and what.
We encourage that.
Oh, well, good. I will send, we will send some more on those. But the, 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 one of the things we just wanna get your sense when, I mean, I, I've watched the, the videos on at least one of them, um, where, where, where are some things you think we might wanna look at in that, um, employee housing at motels? There've been a couple of comments from the community partnership, um, which is part of the Chamber of Commerce, where someone already has a permit and they've been playing by the rules, um, like Parker's River Resort. Do I have to come back every year? But I come back every two years. You know, things like that have come forward. I, I, and I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, you, you guys are the ones who've had to work through these.
One like that, I think the first one came up last year, so we just asked them to come back after a year. We didn't know it.
Yeah.
So, we wanna hear what the results were and any feedback that might have come from police department or whatever. I think after that, we did say, didn't we say two years when they came back? Yeah, so we expanded it to two years.
Good.
That's what we did.
Pretty much, uh, reach.
It is.
You know, and, and so, the, the implementation of it is, we're feeling our way through it.
Yeah.
I agree that what the first year should be, yeah, to see the number of police complaints and the police complaints, but, oh, you know, I, whatever it may be, but just, yeah, how it's being, uh, being managed.
Managed, yeah.
And, uh, that we, we don't wanna see the same thing every year, really. And every two years would be fine.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I'll just share with you. Kathy had sent along to us, as she usually does, all of your decisions. Uh, her note attached to the sandbar, uh, one was, maybe we should think about this code of conduct as something we wanna, that was one of the conditions that you guys had put into this. Um, memorializing that in a more serious way in the, in the, in the zoning bylaw, uh, to make it very clear what kind of the rules are for these things, and that we, we're gonna, we're gonna watch them.
But they just. The Saban, that, he, he doesn't want us to be considered a character. And now we're gonna be actual police, so people find that I don't think it's the wise thing.
No, you, not you guys. It, it's, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the, on the shoulders of the hotel. Uh, but I, I think having an actual decision by the ZBA with the language there, more or less. Yeah. Uh, town and country.
Town and country.
I'm sorry, Saban, I mean, um, um, kind of codifies it, and it helps us. Um, uh, uh, in, in terms of, um, our relationships with the, with the chambers. So, I, I, we just wanted to, you know, there, there have been, there has been a request that we go to a hundred percent. And we said, no. It's not.
We just wanna know if, if you can administer it the way it's written and you feel comfortable about it, or whether you would like the planning board to look at any modifications to make your jobs easier or, or, or more defined in some way.
My feeling on that, some of us know, is just that, uh, there'd be modifications one way or another. I'm not quite sure how to do it. Uh, building commissioner is, is here, and he's had some issues. Luckily, it seems to res- resolve itself what was going on at Village Green. But this, uh, you know, we don't, don't want hundred percent, uh, employee occupancy in motels, especially if they're in a residential zone like that one, isn't it? And, uh, and, and, yeah, it, it ended up that they could conceivably do that just by moving people around. And somewhere or another, that has to be addressed, so that cannot happen. I, I understand that Mr. Heinz has kind of taken over and is starting again his motel and all the, the things are, uh, uh, but, uh, the building commissioner's hands were tied based on those, those particular definitions of uh, transient lodging and so forth and so on, as to how he could, how we would be able to police that. I like to think that there's some kind of language that can be done one way or another. So, uh, and somebody can't be using something like that is, is a hundred percent employee housing, which I said before was essentially. Said before was essentially want to put them out to a group rental. One big group rental and, uh. Um, I don't think anybody wanted to see that, certainly the neighbors didn't. And, uh. Somewhere or another, I think we need someone to just solve that potential problem if somebody wants to really abuse it. Came close to being against.
Yeah, we we've limited it to, you know, I think to try to make sure that it's obviously not if there's an entry. There are some situations where they are, so. I don't know if there's things where someone's like B one or something like that. Thank that away from it away away from everything that we want pops up against it, residential. So, you know, we've.
Out of the problem was rezoning that the H M O D.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think it 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 got triggered where the H M O D has a lot of hotels and the the idea of allowing them to have the fifteen percent. When it started with a fifteen percent was related to their own employees and allowing them to have that. Um, and now that it's being used in a different way that that we expanded the definition. Uh, maybe it's a case where we don't want it in the H M O D too, or we want to restrict it very firmly to fifteen percent. And no special permit allowed beyond fifteen percent of, you know, of your own employees.
So different regulations.
By zone, yeah, right.
I think it's they're going to control the situation. Just truly take a look at the zones, where the property is located.
Yeah.
And take a look at what's appropriate in that zone.
Yeah, I think that needs to be looked at, so we can find some potential switching.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else on?
Were you saying though, just that a hundred, you're not looking at a hundred percent?
No, 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 the 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 some of the initial conversations were. Uh, similar to the petitioned article for accessory apartments. You know, do whatever you want, whenever you want, wherever you, we're kind of like, no. No.
You guys do a good job of of looking at these things, and we do really do appreciate, you know, having your eyes on that. That's why lots sometimes things are special permit because we really want your extra set of eyes on them. And sometimes just hearing the neighbors and them saying, oh, this is a problem. That's well, you can condition it or you can have something that will make it lives better for everybody. So it it does.
I have a very difficult time moving a forty house. Yeah, residential.
Yeah, everyone will. I I mean, even Mark.
Yeah. Yep.
They're opposition.
Yeah, that's why it's all the same city before the board feels that is the format for residents to come and, yep, complain.
Solar canopies. Uh, I know you had sent a note. I think Jay, you had sent a note to us a while ago. Uh, yeah, asking asking us to take a look. I think it started with the hospital.
Yeah.
Parking lot, if I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just. And I know John's not here, but John had the biggest concerns about proliferation solar canopies all over town. Parking lots that, uh, in front of stores and things like that.
Yeah.
It 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 made sense if we had wind regulations. Um, it seemed to make sense that we should have some kind of constraint or regulations about solar.
I I think that's, I mean, that was certainly when I first saw it, it was on White's path. Um, when when they put it in the back, I'm like, great, you know, I didn't have any problems, but then they put it in the. The existing parking in the front, and that's exactly what I started thinking of. Oh, God, we got a lot of parking in front, up and down Route twenty eight. What like that might that look like? So. Uh, we had briefly discussed it, um. Knowing that the hospital was was coming, um, solar has some protections, so we'd have to work with town council very specifically with it. Uh, but I mean, right now, our new regulations restrict parking to the side or rear. Maybe that's something that we can restrict solar. Canopies to the side and the and parking that's into the side and and the rear.
But because of those state laws right now, I mean, they don't have some regulations in place. Then they almost can do whatever they want to do.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark.
General law forty eight specifically excludes solar uses from. Unreasonable regulations, how they were, you know.
Right.
So the structure is just like at the school. You guys said to grant some relief to the school because the driveway cut into a buffer. They said we're an educational use. You don't need relief. I said, no. You you your use is protected, but everything you do on the lot is not. So. The structures went after me to set that. So I don't know. We have to inform the council, but if you wanted to. Have a solar canopy restricted to the side or the rear of the property. I don't know if that's an unreasonable regulation. You might want to check the council, but you can't. Right now, as long as it meets the setbacks and then the lock coverage is. It's no different than what you started with, and I don't right now.
Yeah, the the word reasonable is what comes. Those considerations.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were come on under the amount of lock coverage, correct?
Is it building coverage or impervious coverage? What's it? Well, typically lock coverage is twenty five percent, and I mean, building coverage is twenty five percent, but lock coverage can go up to seventy percent or whatever, as long as you have the. So it's building coverage.
Yeah, so they get over twenty five percent. But I I. That one with the hospital got bumped out a couple of times, so we got a chance to listen to them several times. And I did, I tried to do a little bit of research in between, um, and we're getting the the definitions they were getting and open it up. If you have something in place and and it's not, I think, saying that they have to be either the side or the back or something like that. I don't believe that's unreasonable. We can ask council, but I don't think that's. Just so it's not in front of the building, I think is a very reasonable thing to ask.
Well, if they come before us and they suggest that, um. I don't want to name a building, but you know, with the old but Cumberland Farms, the annuals and sunshine used to be. That kind of mall strip mall in, if they come and they say they want to put a canopy out there.
That's always a variance.
They're not going to get relief under us.
And it impacts like in lot trees too. I mean, I know that I I had a lot of concerns about. The these little openings that they created in the canopies for the for the in lot trees and. The fear that they'll come back later. Well, they died, so we can't, you know, we need to take them down and we can't put them in anymore. Or they're blocking, exactly, or they're blocking the sunlight. So so I don't, I I mean, we even had to work a little bit with with the White's Path one of, you know. Uh, making sure that they kind of tried to work around and keep the existing in lot trees because those are something that.
That's the one thing there, trees and fun, so they don't really see.
Yeah, yeah, not too bad. It's in our industrial. Oh, I don't think it needed it.
Well, I know it's filled.
Do they need belief?
No, and that's setbacks.
Right.
I mean, we're all tree back in.
Yeah, they had cut down a lot of in lot trees over the years.
But I mean, what all of that get like sixteen trees and just think.
Well, listen, we we make just so we can tell it our own.
Yeah.
We made the Cape Cod.
Well, it's important. I mean, a lot of people, you know, they're still chopping them down or they're dying, and I know that's, you know, not on the. Probably a list, but see, appreciate.
They do re-landscape their whole property.
Yeah.
And killed every every single plant.
I love those dead trees at the roost.
Anyway, um, Kathy, what on on something like this or this would be a an amendment. Um, that we'd have to get started.
Oh, it would take a while.
It's going to take a while. Um, and some of the steps would be seeing what other towns are doing. I mean, how do you, how do you? How do you create?
I think I would start initially talking to town council and like, how far does he think we can go and maybe suggesting some, you know, like the idea of the rear to the side. Um, and and are we talking about, and are we also talking about ground mounted solar too? Because that's a whole nother. Um. You know, there's lots of places that have lots of towns that have the ground mounted solar overlay districts. Um, is that something that?
We're interested. Like the field and Dennis?
Yeah.
Well, our 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 good thought processes here in the town of Yarmouth, maybe the golf course, that if it's all field. Aren't we happy? Right? So in the land court, you know, the the landfill isn't, uh, is is much better served here in Yarmouth than over there. We 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 put a field in this town.
Right.
The school is the only place you have.
Throw with them taking residential zones and chopping down every tree to build build solar farms either. I mean, I'd rather have them on parking lot section.
Yeah.
They're talking.
Building mountains.
Use what they can. Clear cut field and clear cut woods now.
How about with the old Chinese buffet used to be? Well, could they put solar panels in there across the whole?
I mean, you you all, we almost got our. If they put, uh, solar panels.
Quiet neighbor.
Um, I.
Quiet neighbor, but I we I saw.
Well, you'd have to put buffer trees in and you'd have to meet the setback requirements and then it'd be the building coverage issue, so.
Hmm.
You know. It's a lot. A lot of thought. I haven't had one yet. Don't, I'm sorry, you put that in the universe. Don't say it three times.
I I think it's going to come up before the land court or the S J C very, very.
Probably.
And it it has to because of the expanded need for alternative energy sources, you know. And we're certainly not putting up, uh, windows anywhere.
Yeah.
That really drew the ire of everybody. Look what it did. Drew that whole town. At the A's and the N's.
I I sat through the the solar planning one to the.
Oh, yeah, C P K C, yes.
Um. You know, it was really interesting because they they talked about three demands. Um, they're trying it within the state. There they've got this these goals with solar, which it can include clear cut, clear cutting some land now. They were talking mostly about Western ass.
Yeah.
So they're clear cutting land, putting up these solar arrays on the ground, et cetera. But at the same time, um, there's there's demands on the land for housing that they've talked about. As far as issues, being able to put up more housing and have affordable housing in different places. And they were talking about reclaiming land to get it back to to to, uh, to native native woods.
Sounds like CPA.
So it was like, I I asked the question, all these three, these three different demands are going after the same space.
Right, yeah.
How are you ever going to meet all three of them at the same time? They had no answer.
Three houses with building mounted solar solved.
I I fully support and understand the whole soul, the whole renewable energy situation and. You know, but you know, there's there's multiple different needs within the state. I just don't see it, and it could get out of hand. That's what I was concerned about. By the way, I believe nuclear shouldn't be brought in, so.
We're not allowing a reactive.
Talk about the jumping rock.
Yeah.
Accessory apartments would seem great.
Okay. The one other, the one other item.
Yeah, I again.
The largest section of our zoning by law.
We are constantly being asked to give relief from a sign code. That sign code was very, uh, a lot of work went into that.
Yeah.
And it wasn't all that long ago. But.
And it became more lenient.
Yeah, well, we've we certainly have been very lenient. You know, we've been as lenient as we can be, but we can't be lenient when it says, uh, the sign is no, no larger than thirty six. Square feet. That that's what it says. It's black and white, and we're not, even if we think it's right, our board. Uh, is if I get a vote and there's another one with me, is not going to legislate the sign code. So if you think that there are areas where you're hearing from business that. Businesses that they'd like to see it, for example, I know Neon has come up. I know, uh, uh. Moving messages have come up. Uh, and even though we've tried to restrict them, I go up and down twenty eight and I see them all over the place now on gas pumps. Um, uh, so those sorts of things. The only one we have in town that is, uh, truly permitted is the moving sign up on, uh, D Y. Um, and that that was a stretch. We argued about that quite a while. Uh, before we gave that permission, but because it was a municipal use, we went.
Yeah, chamber commerce has.
But in in any event, I, the, uh. The the long and short of it is that if if your board thinks that there are needs changed, we'll support a hundred percent, but we can't do a damn thing. By our board.
But I guess it's like, what have you been hearing? What's been coming before you that's been problematic that you're like, gee, I'd like to, okay, sorry.
Signs, but also the the question.
Yes.
Oh, and numbers of signs.
Murals.
Murals. Um, and and, you know, I I mean, I'm going to throw something out. It just bothered me, but you know.
People want extra signs.
It's like, what is art? It's a hard thing to define.
Right.
Well, we had the, but the little captain down by the water statue that came up.
Jolly Captain.
Jolly Captain, they wanted to put it back up. Well, that's art. And they were saying it's not, they said it's not a sign. They said it was art and we're placing something, but then somebody else wanted to do a mural and that wasn't good, so. And by all means, I know you'll clarify.
Jolly Captain was an unlettered. But then they put letters on it. So he has his man of the sign.
Okay, so I guess.
A mural is not defined in the bylaw, so right off the bat, it's not allowed.
That's why I'm just bringing it up to see if it made sense to have something that they're not supposed to choose.
The I don't want to be.
That's a slippery slippery.
And I also don't want to be ragged up and down to your twenty eight, which we're trying. Despite what somebody said recently at one of our meetings, that it's becoming more honky tonk. Uh, I think everybody. Well, it's always been.
Yeah.
But I miss the old honky tonk with the nightclub. You know, we're we're so restrictive on entertainment in this town. Nobody can dance.
I'm sorry, what what were you saying? I think you were had a thought you were saying there, Steve, about the mural and art and not why.
I I don't think we're going to see, I do believe we're going to see murals all up and down. Uh, Route twenty eight and the streets gate is going to become obnoxious to every visitor.
Uh, maybe they need to be defined.
If what you do is redefine and say, I. Consider it a sign change. It's not, sign is fine.
But what's that? We're talking about character, right? We are talking, sure, trying to limit the sign, we're trying to, you know, get rid of the honky tonk image. That's all creating character.
That's one of the things we do.
That's right.
Yeah.
There's another one. So.
Like the elephant. That's scary.
I just remember the big fight. I don't know if you remember a long time ago when you had these, um. The big complex signs like, um, at Lighthouse Landing, it was all couldn't have any color in it. It took us a long time to get it approved to allow to have the different colors. In the sign.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so that was like our big win since I've been here. Let's get color.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Saban.
So I've I I guess one of my concern, uh, questions is, um. How we define the difference between a sign and art and do we have a bylaw that? Or should we not discuss a bylaw about public art? Um, I got to tell you, I've spent. The last three and a half weeks traveling across this country and. I've seen some pretty amazing public art that I'd like to see us try to duplicate on Cape Cod and in Yarmouth. Um. And and that type of stuff, some of it. What I'm hearing may be considered a sign because it's a painting of a mural or a picture. Um. But really, it's not. It's public art. I mean, I was just at a, um. A pictured rocks, interestingly enough, name, picture pictured rocks, Michigan. And the bathroom facilities there had beautiful murals of the area on the side of it that today we would not allow. Um, but they weren't. They were very ni- nice and well done and and were very. Historically informative about the area of Munising, Michigan. So I think one of the questions we need to look at is what is public art and what is a sign? It sounds like that's one of the concerns that the Z B A is struggling with and maybe that's.
If if the town came and said they wanted I on town building, we would probably go along with that. But it's not town buildings. It's commercial.
Right.
Right.
You know, we we don't restrict what the town does with the buildings. And they built the new D D W garage, wanted to put a mirror, mural of a a tow truck on it. We we wouldn't have that. Say about that. It's when it becomes a sign to to generate business for a homepage, whatever that is.
So.
You know, if if the if the piano room decided to put out a piano on on the edge of. You know, if if the if the piano room decided to put out a piano on on the uh edge of the. The grass out there, uh would we allow that? Sure we wouldn't, even if it was decided, sorry, a little many.
So again, I think that, you know, I'll give you another example, an artist who has big. Uh wings painted on the side of their building. I've seen, you know, people stand in front of them and they look like they got wings, those pictures, those paintings. Matter of fact, there's one in Dennis. Is that a painting or is that an, is that a sign because the owner happens to be an artist? I think that's something that the planning board needs to take a look at and kind of help. It sounds to me, help the Z B A define what the difference between a sign and a piece of art is.
Well, on that, you know, I I like to think of us as answering the question. What does it have to do with zoning? Public art is not zoning, but I don't think the zoning bylaw is the place where these questions can be answered. Um I think the board of selectmen, they've been asked to get a commission, a committee together on public art. Um our committee C E D C that Ken and I were both on for a while. Um people would come in and and talk about the need for some definitions from the town as to what public art is. And where it can be displayed. Um I don't believe it's a planning board and zoning and or a zoning issue. I I just.
When do we decide when it's allowed or not allowed to to create? I'll give you the cultural standards. What if they want to put statues out front now? Now that's. So I think we've really got to kind of look at that and maybe it is a zoning issue.
See, I'm just saying, I think sometimes you can, in the zoning bylaw, make it clear in saying. Um public art will be addressed through uh such and such policy of the board of selectmen. We've done that, I think, with ladder signs, we've done that with the banners. Kind of to get it out of the zoning bylaw and not get tripped up there and allow it under a separate process. It doesn't have to go through the whole town. Meeting, you know, uh two thirds votes if you want to change anything. And then leave it up to the board of selectmen or a committee that the board of selectmen has decided with regard to what they want to do with public art. We have some places, um. You know, at the Bass, the Bass River Bridge that's being done right now, they have these two pedestals at each end. Right now, they're just putting a um. Circular dome on it or circular ball on it, but those are spaces where they are, they have, they're gonna have them lit and everything for some type of public art. So we need to get kind of our act together so that we can do things like commission that, so that we can get the art, and same with Dennis, so that it'd be kind of like a nice, beautiful entranceway. Uh statement, bridge in a sense for for the community. And then it applies to all kinds of places, the Riverwalk Park. Want to have different types of public art as you're winding through the Riverwalk Park. How do we solicit that? How do we get that done? Um so that is a process that needs to be fleshed out. They'll be okay with public art.
They don't like burn, they don't like to have anybody upset with their water. I I don't think the suggestion of as asking, speaking of science. Tell you what we thought should occur, rather to address. And and the usual. Neon moving sign, moving. Size. So size may be absolutely appropriate, may not want to consider any additional size sign. But that's where it comes in. Sorry. And so those are the concerns that caused me to bring that up.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh E V charging station.
Yeah.
Uh we just had that come before us and we turned it down because it was no, thank you, because it was, uh you know. Considered not appropriate.
This is where they were gonna be giving it for free, but then they would have these big screens that would have new s- new advertising every eight seconds. They they contacted me and I had into, I had gotten the impression that they were gonna get back to us.
Yeah, that's why.
It was the advertising on the moving side.
That's how they could afford to give it to you. You know, that they were gonna make money off of the advertising. So you may want to think about. There'll be a lot of charging stations coming up in the future. Uh within the next decade, we're gonna see them everywhere and probably gas stations closer. So. Now living on a problem, twenty one. And and the last would be if you maybe just think, put that up. We have a. I don't know whether it's appropriate to. We have been asked on occasion, consider allowing single lot cottage communities. To take a cottage and allow it to become a three bedroom, four bedroom, three bath home. Uh because lot is big, but it's all one lot, never been subdivided, it's never been, that felt standing behind it. And you know, when we make those decisions, somebody doesn't like it, they appeal. And that costs this town money. I think the appeal will be one, I mean, we will get the appeal, but that's secondary. It's some kind of guidance on what should be allowed, certain, because if we walk it down Route twenty eight. We see that there are a lot of these multi cottage parks. Places that, you know, pretty soon the rent they get from is going to be outstripped by the value of. Yeah, so they're gonna, you know, somehow want to convert those. One right down, uh brings to mind that at on one side of the car. The entrance or streets gate, there is a uh two family, two story. Uh home of this construct, I'm not sure how that happened because we looked at it. Do you know how that, how that all came being?
Is that next to Yarmouth Gardens? Where's that?
I'm sorry, I I knew you'd ask the name, but when we look at it, if you remember, we had a fellow that kept. Uh violating uh the zoning, uh the building code. And he kept coming for us saying vehicle, vehicle after the fact. Well, that particular cottage complex to its left, as you're looking at it. Add a uh uh right, two family.
Oh.
Two story.
Yeah, kind of a big.
Next to Yarmouth Gardens.
What? Okay, but is that what we want to allow in cottage?
I don't know, the conversion of these because.
These are actually motels. Oh, wait, wait until the sewers come in front of them and see what happens.
Well, there's a big problem, sewage right now. We've been talking about sewage in this town for a long time.
I tried to get it, you know, do it forty years ago when they could have had better money and everything, yeah.
Talked about a marina with the boy. So a lot of things to get talked about.
We're getting close on the Riverwalk Park.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you Bob, do it.
I have no issue.
We are. Yeah, they have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh you're moving it, second.